City of Norco City Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 20th. Call to order at 5:00.
Board and council members Greg Newton.
Here.
Berwin Hanna. Kevin Bash. Vice Chair Mayor Pro Tem Robin Garmeyer. Chair and Mayor Ted Hoffman.
Here.
All present.
City Council will now recess to close session to consider matters that are on agenda. City Council will reopen, reconvene public session, and report of actions taken in the closed session, City of Three. With that, we have a pleasure of allegiance with Councilmember Greg Newton. Please remain standing, and Pastor Daniel?
Thank you. Father, we thank you this moment for giving us the opportunity to congregate here today. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you, oh Lord and glory, for our city, for our state, and for our nation. Because you have said in your word, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. We bless the name of the Lord today, praying for our leaders, that you would give them wisdom, ability, and an ambi- an ambi- an ambi- to lead this city and the people with diligence, dedication, and with determination. We pray that you are going to unite our people here in this city. For unity is power. We pray today that the blessings of the Lord will be overshadowed upon our city here, so that our city will be blessed, and be overshadowed by your mercies, your goodness, to follow this city according to your word and the promise. We bless the name of the Lord for today. We pray that you would continue to lead our leaders here and our people. Your goodness and your mercies following them, for this is the promise of God. We thank you, we bless you for this day. Pray for the meeting of the day, that you are going to bless all the proceedings, and your name shall be glorified. We bless the name of the Lord, let your name be glorified. For it is in Jesus' name that we pray. And on God's people, we say together, amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Daniel. All right, Chief Lane, you're up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and members of the community. It's my honor this evening to introduce the new Northwest Division Chief Jeff Like. Jeff comes to us from the San Bernardino Unit of Cal Fire and transferred there as a Division Chief into the vacant position previously held by Chief Lonzess. I personally worked with Jeff over my entire career. He and I were partners at the Hamner Station a very long time ago. His time in Riverside, as he'll get to, was spent in this area of the county. He knows it well, he's vested in it, and I can't think of any better choice than Chief Like to lead us in the Northwest Division and its partner cities. With that, I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and all the great people of Norco. I'm very humbled by Chief Lane's words. I've only been here a short time, but in that short time, I've been to a few staff meetings and got to visit with staff and some of the City Council members, and I will tell you, for only being here four or five weeks, I'm humbled. It didn't take me long to figure out, this is a great place to work. I look forward to being here many years. I consider myself very lucky to work with Chief Lane, Chief Owens, who have built and worked with all of you and built great relationships, and looking forward to continuing the great fire service that Cal Fire and Riverside County Fire Department have shared with the City of Norco, and like I said, very humbled to be here. Thank you.
All right, don't run away yet. Berwin, you got any questions of the Chief?
Just want to say it's a pleasure to meet you, sir, and welcome aboard over here. We're kind of civilized most of the time. But I think that's one of the best things the city's done, is when we contracted the Cal Fire, and we have more coverage and good coverage, and we thank you guys for supplying us with good personnel, and especially our B.C.s, both of them, plus the ones that come in on the weekend, are excellent people, and we thank a lot of them. And even though ours cannot always be here, because he may be up north fighting other fires, or south, wherever they send him, but I want you to know that we're never without him. He's always, his presence is always felt, and we- This guy may be sitting in his chair, but this guy don't have a phone, and he don't have to leave during the meeting, so. But anyway, we appreciate everything from you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, you turned a little red there. You okay?
I'm good.
All right, all right. As you can see, we have a sense of humor. All right. All right, I think Greg and Berwin, I'm going to leave this one, next one up to you on the recognition.
Well, we're here today to honor and recognize a good friend and a community member, so, but before I ask Mike to come up here, we all know that he's leaving to be closer to his family in Wisconsin, and not sure what's wrong with him, because the coldest I've ever been in my life was at a Bears game in Soldiers Field on Lake Michigan, until I went to a game in Green Bay at Lambeth Field. And I've never been colder. I don't know why you're doing that, buddy. So, Mike, if you'd step up here, please.
Do you want to? Do you want to? Go ahead. Go right up.
Okay, this way.
Can I turn any red or?
You're in for it now, buddy.
Okay. Dr. Williams. For over thirty years, Dr. Mike Williams has been an advocate of animal welfare and quality of life of animals, particularly with our equines. Some of the items Dr. Williams has helped with the city and animal control services that should be noted as follows. He most recently was instrumental in sitting on our biosecurity committee and was a leader in assisting staff and the committee to create the city of Norco's biosecurity policy and set protocols for implementation and risk management. He has provided instruction, education for staff, and has provided classes for the public on here and at the shelter in regards to horse husbandry. Mike has provided education and have given classes in euthanasia training for staff. He's always willing to consult and meet with animal control officers in the field on cruelty cases in Norco, has gone to court with the city attorney, and Norco Animal Control is an expert witness to obtain search warrants, has accompanied animal control and RSO on search warrants within the city related to animal abuse cases, has testified on post-seizure hearing and cruelty cases, has treated numerous livestock animals here at the shelter, and he is, he has been our go-to vet for both livestock and animals in general, both here at the shelter and at homes in Norco. Mike has responded to assist NART on animals in distress on many occasions. He has a wealth of animal knowledge and is always willing to give advice on any questions to animal control and city staff. And Mike, and this is so important, has donated hundreds of hours in service to our animal control services and to the city. I don't know how much to say to you. You've been a friend for a long time. So, the City of Norco hereby honors Michael "Doc" Williams for his compassionate care of Norco's animals, response to emergencies, assistant to city staff, and commitment to the community's equestrian lifestyle for more than thirty years. Berwin, you want to say a few words first?
Dr. Mike's been my vet for probably right at thirty years, and through the years, people always acquire these horses that are not broke or they don't like humans. So, dozens of times, and Frankie and the late Charles Hemmings, myself, Buzz, Mike Wilcox, at one time or another, dozens of times every year, we've gone out with the doctor and to help him capture these things and treat them, and then there's always give them something to lay them on the ground where we could trim their feet, and that's always a fun deal. But he's always been a trooper, he jumps right in there and helps, he didn't want anybody getting hurt, and he's just done so much for the community through the years, it's unreal, and he's taken a beating like everybody else with these, with these animals, but we always, we always managed to survive, but I always want to, always thank him for the good times we had, and when it was all over, we were still able to walk and get out of there. So, Doctor, I appreciate it, and appreciate your friendship and everything for the last thirty years. We're going to miss you, buddy.
Well, once again, I'm truly humbled, overwhelmed, almost speechless, which I'm sure some of you find hard to believe. I just set out to do my job, that's always, it's all I ever wanted to do. I always thought of the horses first, people second, because that's what we're supposed to do, but I always kept the client in mind. I'm going to tell a little story. I'd been in town maybe a month, and I, I don't remember the exact circumstances, but I apparently said something like, "Well, animal control really doesn't know what they're And I was promptly visited by Renee Power, Mickey, and Charles Hemmings, who said, "Really? Why don't you put your money where your mouth is?" And that's what I've been doing for the last thirty-six years, and I, I've always felt honored and privileged to be the veteran on call for the animal shelter of the City of Norco. I just tried to do my job to the best of my ability, and the last two or three weeks with the response of the community and my clients have simply been overwhelming for me. I'm still trying to process it all, and it's been an honor and privilege to serve you, and I really mean that, and thank you very much for everything. I, I don't know if I'll ever be able to thank everybody properly, but please, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much.
Another picture.
We'll do it in the front here. I'm just shaking. I'm right here in here. I'm not going to freeze my ass off.
Yeah, you will, buddy.
Hold your plaque, Mike.
Yeah, hold your plaque up there. I don't have any tears on it.
Took you thirty years to get it. Hold on.
I'm sweating.
You again.
I like to invite Stacy Turner to the mic, please, or up to the podium. Come on over here. Pleasure to meet you in person.
Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm here with my colleague Vicki from the Economic Development Advisory Council for the City of Norco. And on behalf of the City Council, I'm very happy to present this month's Business Appreciation Award to Stacy Turner Stable and Riding School. Stacy Turner began her business in Norco around 1984, under which she trained show horses. Around 1993, she was approached by another local business owner, who suggested that maybe she might consider training or doing a class for basic horsemanship training. She loved the idea so much that she decided to go ahead and give it a try. It started off with twenty-five students from a Penny Saver ad titled "Horsemanship Classes for the Novice," soon grew to what we know today as a widely recognized riding school and stables throughout the valley. She told me that she has always been open to new ideas from the community and finds great joy in sponsoring the kids in our annual Norco Fair. The plaque being presented to her tonight reads, "The City of Norco hereby honors Stacy Turner Stable and Riding School for introducing the region's youth to Norco's equestrian lifestyle, providing instruction and encouragement to novice and champions alike, and truly representing the spirit of Horstown USA." Stacy, congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, say a few words.
Oh my goodness. Well, I don't know what to say. Thank you. How do you follow Mike Williams? I could have gone first, and then, you know, I would have looked better. But thank you to everybody, it's just, I've always just wanted to do my job and try to teach people and horses and horsemanship in the right way, and like Dr. Williams, to keep everybody safe, and do the best we can to just educate the folks in the town of, so they can enjoy their horses. So, and I really appreciate you all thinking of me. Thank you, and it's really an honor and humbling. Thank you so much.
You know, I know there's a lot of, she teaches a lot of kids, but a fellow colleague of mine from the Sheriff's Department, he got ready to retire. He goes, "Hey, I've never ridden on a horse, I didn't know how to do it." Ken Paulson. And he goes, he goes, "Who do I learn how to ride a horse from?" I said, "You're not going to, I'm not going to teach you, because I don't want to take that responsibility." So I says, "Go see Stacy." You not only taught him how to ride, you taught him what a horse to get on, and how everything else, and now he's a member of a mounding unit, and you see him riding around all over. So, excellent job. So, and he's, he was in his forties when you taught him, so that's good. So, I'm going to skip our agenda a little bit while I'm down here, and Tony, I think you have something?
Mayor and City Council, hello everyone. We're here on behalf of the Horse Week volunteers. We have some of them with us, and these are the tips from all of the generous folks that is going to go to the animal shelter. And as you know, it takes an army to get the job done, so we did a lot of hard work, and we're very proud this year to present this, so here it is.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Tony and his volunteer crew. They don't have to donate to the shelter, but every year they do, and his generosity is greatly appreciated. I don't know how to thank them more. The animals thank them. This goes a long way to the treatment and care for the animals at the shelter, and we truly appreciate it. Thank you, Tony.
I have to admit, I was reading his wife's post today on the social media, and not only did you give that donation, but a lot of other organizations in town also got donations. Thank you guys, everyone. It's a great week in April, and it's why everybody gets together and we all become cowboys again for a week, so it's great. All right, thank you, Tony, and the rest of the Horse Week Committee. All right, this is for you, Mr. Petrie, the parks and your staff. I'm not going to do all the whereas's, if you don't mind. I'll do the first one. Whereas increasing the quality of life, building a thriving community, and encourage vibrant and safe neighborhoods are the goals of the Park and Recreation and Community Services Department. The vision of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services is to build communities of people of all ages connected by vision, play, hope, and joy in life, and parks and recreation make lives and communities better now and in the future. It provides residents with a better quality of life, increased property values, attracts tourists, improves air and water, and brings in the community together. Residents value recreation as it provides a positive alternative for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief, especially during non-school hours. It promotes the arts, it increases social connections, aids in therapy, and promotes in lifelong learning adds, promotes lifelong learning, adds to the economic vitality of the community, and residents value their parks and equestrian trails for access to outdoor spaces for children and adults to play, ride, and be active, exercise, and participate in group sports. And parks and open space provide access to the serenity and the inspiration of nature, as well as preserve, protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. And the residents of Norco and the businesses, community organizations along with visitors benefit from the wide range of parks, equestrian, pedestrian trails, along open spaces, sports fields, facilities, programs, and special events, including the George Ingalls Equestrian Events Center, the Veterans Memorial Plaza, the Wayne Macon Shears Sports Complex, the Rosium Eldridge Senior Center, and the Garden. We People Play School, Riley Gymnasium, National Day of the American Cowboy, Fourth of July Picnic and Patriotic Trail Ride, and the Horstown Parade of Lights and Christmas Festival. The Norco City Council urges all its residents to recognize the parks and recreation enriches their lives and visitors, as well as adding the value of the community's homes and neighborhood. Thereby, as Mayor, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim, do hereby proclaim and celebrate July 2018 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Brian? Junior, for you and your staff, excellent job. You got you? No. Okay.
Just Mayor, members of the council, thank you for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. On behalf of our department and our Parks and Recreation Commission, we thank you, and it's an honor to serve this community.
Just so you know, I always tease Brian about making it short and sweet. Okay, going down to business now. City Council, this is City Council, it's Assessment Agency Business Act, City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Greg, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Last June 7th, I attended the special board meeting for the Chino Basin Desalter Authority. Not too much to report. We did adopt our fiscal year 2018, nineteen capital and operating budget. We will be having a small decrease in our fund balance. We'll, we'll have total revenues of forty-eight million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars against expenditures of forty-nine million five hundred thousand dollars. So, we're going to have a little over, almost seven-hundred thousand dollar shortage this year, so I'm sure there'll be some additional fees and assessments coming back to work that out and purchase water. That's all I have to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kevin?
I attended my RCA meeting, Riverside Conservation Authority, nothing really to report on that. It's kind of just sort of a dormant time. WRCOG, I had another meeting. It's called the Feasibility Study for Experience, which is a regional innovation center, and what that is, is the creation of incubators and accelerators for new businesses. An incubator is a, a collection within a building in which people who want to start businesses take a little section or an area to workshop or whatever to create a business. An accelerator is a, something in which they, you incubate, but then you also find ways to fund whatever it is they're doing, and that range is everywhere from making gadgets to creating a restaurant, to whatever it is you want to do, and what's happening is is that WRCOG is looking to put together a regional incubator accelerator. Coincidentally, at the same time, I also am part of the advisory board for the President of Norco College, and one of the things we're working on, we hear a lot about the veterans centers and things like that, we're also looking at creating incubators and accelerators to try to capture the technology transfers from the Navy Base and from the federal government. So I'm trying to find ways to connect those two things. Something else happening at Norco College, and I had to sign a non-exposure agreement, so I can't tell you what the green energy is, but there's something that's very exciting that looks to be coming down the pike, that may save millions of dollars, literally, in energy costs, a brand-new kind of technology. I sit on the G.G. Board, normally don't talk about that, I sit on it with Corinne Holder, but I got a call a couple days ago that they weren't going to be finishing the intermediate school per the promises of the G.G. I was kind of surprised, because I didn't realize our meetings were being followed, but I have the assurances of the superintendent of schools that in point of fact, all of the improvements to the intermediate school are going to be completed. They, they've put a bunch of funds together, and it's going to happen, and I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
You don't want to tell us about your trip to Annapolis?
Her son.
All right. Her son went to Annapolis for a week, so it was pretty cool. All right, Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, today I traveled with the mayor. We went down to Southwest Detention Center where Mayor Hoffman used to work. They renamed it today, had a ceremony. I'll let him finish telling the story since it's, since it was his old home place down there per se. But, excuse me, with RCTC and RTA, most of the stuff, the last meeting is budgets, except RCTC the other day. There was a gentleman there that made just about a one-hour presentation on the new truck distribution center that's going in and out at the 6215 freeway out in Moreno Valley. I think it's 2,600 acres and 4 million square feet of buildings. It's hard to imagine the size of that, but we already have enough traffic problems here in this region. And he was showing the impact that the trucks is gonna have on the traffic. And that's not counting the new homes they're building down the 15 freeway here, and they've already jammed it up. But these trucks, traffic into that distribution center and out of it is gonna affect every freeway around here, 24 hours a day. I don't, I don't know, somebody's gonna have to do something. But it's, it's just unreal, the impact that, that's, that's gonna have. And as we get more reports, as they start building, and I'll give more, more reports on it. And on the 15 freeway report, how many of you have noticed the concrete plant that they're setting up over on Hidden Valley, right off of the freeway? So we're thinking, all the concrete trucks that's gonna drive up there and fill up and be jamming the intersection, well, they have a solution to that. They're gonna have a conveyor that goes across the freeway. The trucks will load in between the two freeways where they're doing the expansion. The only trucks that'll go up to that place is to dump the concrete that they mix. But that, they showed us a picture of the conveyor and how it will keep the trucks out of the way of the automobile traffic up there on that intersection because it's already messed up most of the time of the day anyway. But that was good news that they're gonna have a conveyor unless it breaks and pours all the concrete down on the freeway there. But with vector control, the mosquito season has been started for a while. And it's really getting bad there, doing more spraying and everything. In fact, they're gonna spray Friday morning over here on the Eastvale side, behind those houses, between the river and those houses that we see over there. Plus, they're gonna spray the river along over there by Silver Lakes. And you probably read it in the paper, they have two cases of West Nile in the county. One's in Riverside and one's in the city of Eastvale. They don't give us any more details about that, but it is human, human West Nile. So be careful, spray and wear long sleeves and watch for the mosquitoes. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. I got to, after our council meeting last time, we got to the We People. If you have little kids or grandkids, it's a great program for the pre-kindergarten kids. It's a lot of fun. These kids really appreciate being out there. So I got to watch them graduate. And if I ever see that video of me doing that little dance, I'll destroy it. Went to the RICW meeting, Chad and myself. They're planning to upgrade and do a lot of maintenance on the facility. It's just about done, but every time we turn around, they have to add more because they realize it's a treatment plant and it stinks. Okay, so we deal with that. There'll be, hopefully we give them enough money to get by this year, at least for part of the year. Went to the League of Cities Mayor's meeting. And what we discuss, and we're no different than any other cities on dealing with budget constraints and the cost of law enforcement and public safety. A lot of the cities there contract with the sheriff's department. We all share the same issues. And on that, we will tomorrow be going with the city manager along with other cities. We'll be getting an update on the sheriff's contract here coming up and some of the things the board supervisors are gonna be contemplating. One of the topics at the mayor's meeting was the past election, the poor voter turnout. And that's why I'm proud of our city staff has been going out and doing this outreach program. And we will continue that this summer of trying to get the voters to get out. Less than 20% on a midterm election, very poor for the county overall. So we need, tell your friends, let's get out and vote. That's what's important, register and get out and vote. The other thing, and Frankie left, but for you people that own birds, avarys, chickens, just be cautious. Newcastle was found in San Bernardino and suspected cases in Riverside County. If you're not familiar with Newcastle, it'll wipe out your birds. If you, if they don't kill your birds, the county or somebody in the agency will take your birds. It's a nasty disease, there's no cure. So just be cautious of it, look it up. It's on the California Department of Food and Agriculture's website. And if you own animals, that's where you check, get updates on it. The, on a lighter note, very proud to yesterday, the city council and the corner Norco Unified School District recognized the Norco Girls Varsity Softball Team on their CIF Southern Section Championship, Division One Championship. The coaches there, if you don't know, Norco High School has had eight, been to the Division One Championships seven times, won five of those. And on Division Two, they won their once and won one of those. So amazing that the amount of what our kids here and the programs that we start, just like in the Park and Recs League, those softball players start out here and they're going up to high school and they represent as well. And if you look at where these girls are going to, four-year Division One Schools, it's quite impressive. We've got one going to West Point from our high school here. So proud of them. On a note, and I know Bonnie's gonna touch on this later on, Fourth of July is coming up. She's got, she's heading the trail ride. And then Jeff's not here, so I'll put a pitch in for his picnic in the park. We'll have a lot of fun. So join us on the Fourth of July at Ingalls Park and Pike's Peak Park. This Friday, concerts in the park. Jeff's not here, so I'm plugging for that. Who's got it this week? You do? You're the, okay, you're the, yeah, you pointed yourself. All right, you got it, Kevin. All right. And then later on in July, the Day of the Cow, we put on on July 28th. We're gonna have a lot of fun, cow chip throwing, the mule and chariot races, and guess what? We're doing barrel racing inside Moreno this year. So get your horses ready. All right, moving on. Yes, sir. All right, one more thing.
You didn't finish your jail thing.
Oh, my jail thing with Coysburg? No, I can do that.
Go ahead, then I'll finish mine.
All right. He was making fun because he went down to the south, it used to be Southwestern Detention Center. It's now Coys M. Bird Detention Center. Coys was the sheriff. I worked under him. He worked there from '86 and for about eight years. Eric Brittick worked there, we worked there together. We were in the business office and working on the other side of the bars, okay? All right, so that's where we were. But if you go the history of the county and the detention centers, that detention center was built, it took 10 years to get that thing built up and running. And they did it with a lot of handshakes and communications and things like that among the ranchers and the property owners down there that saw a real definite need in their area for a, for a facility, for a detention facility. And so proud of the fact that it's named after Coysburg, who's I enjoyed working under. He was a good guy. Your turn, Berwin.
Okay, one thing I forgot to mention, you know, a lot, a lot of youth in Norco have a lot of talent, just like the girls' softball team and the kids' sports at the high school. One young man that just graduated and his mom works here in the Parks Department, Dalton Shepherd, last weekend, he was at Bishop at the state high school rodeo championship finals, representing District Eight down here. And he wound up the state champion bull rider. And I watched his first two rides on a little video deal, I couldn't pull it up on Saturday morning to see the final one. But he rode his first two bulls. He was the only one that rode the first two. And he will be going in July to Wyoming to the national high school rodeo finals. So we got a lot of kids in this, in this town that have a lot of ability and a lot of talent. And all we can do is just support them and cheer them on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you just reminded me, I forgot Flag Day. I want to thank everybody for helping out on our first Flag Day concert and celebration up there at the Veterans Memorial. What a unique experience to have in the community church in Norco, choir singing patriotic and religious songs up there in an evening setting. And if you came, thank you. If not, we're gonna do it again next year, so looking forward to it. Going on to item two, city council consent items. Are there any items to be polled? I'm gonna pull C.
I'm gonna pull E, C, P and V. C, E, P and V.
You going, you jumping back to the B? Is that what you said, or V?
C, E, P and V.
Oh, V, Victor.
Which is CPV.
All right.
I'd like to pull L.
Oh, Berwin.
W.
W.
And Robin?
No. Mayor, I do have a card from the public, wants to pull item 2F.
2F. Kevin, you said E also. E, right?
Motion to approve the rest?
First and a second?
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I pulled C. Okay, that's the recap of the Plan Commission. And I'm specifically looking at the item B, I believe it was 4B on there regarding the site plan. I'd like to request, I'm gonna pull that for appeal for hearing here.
Second.
I will do a verbal roll call vote. Councilmembers Newton, Bash.
Yes.
Hannah.
No.
Mayor Portem Grenmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
I got all the numbers. We're on E, right?
We're on C still, because I have another item there.
On C?
Yep.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I would like to pull 4C, the sign issue. Do I have that right?
Kevin?
Do C, I'm, wait.
Okay, you know that's going back to Plan Commission, right?
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Is it going back?
Yeah, it's going back to Plan Commission.
Okay, so we're good. All right, I rescind that.
Okay.
Last I heard, we didn't know yet. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Please vote on this item. That motion passes unanimously.
All right, Kevin, you have E?
Yeah, yeah, very briefly. You know, I keep bringing this up and I, what I would like to do is I really believe that we need to relook at combining Parks and Rec, the Parks and Recreation Commission with the Streets and Trails Utilities Commission. I keep coming back from these seminars where they talk about Parks and Recreation, trails being part of that. It was a unanimous decision and I would love at some near-future date to look at combining those two commissions. I think it would be in the best interest of the city.
Is that a motion or is it a?
That's a, that's a motion, yeah.
No, second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmembers Newton?
I have a question. This is to just discuss this item that we talked about previously?
No, I think what I want to do is I want to discuss it.
That's all we can do, is put it on a future agenda.
That's all I want to do, is just, I want to discuss the issue and talk about different angles of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grenmeyer?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
No.
That motion passes 3-2.
Kevin, do you want to do the E by itself then?
Um, motion to approve, do, 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 motion to approve the rest.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
A second.
Please vote.
Okay, you had F pulled by public?
Yes, I have a card from Karen Leonard.
Good evening, Karen.
I was kind of hoping to hear a little bit about, kind of a summary here because there's not a lot of information online regarding this. The asphalt, is this, we're doing a slurry seal and a coat or what are we doing here? It seems like an awful lot of money, $101,000 to do our portion of a parking lot. And I gotta say, right now, we're asking people to consider a tax. We have streets that have potholes all over it. It really does not give the impression that this is a good time to be spending $100,000 on this parking lot. We got a lot of places all over town that really need some help. Regardless if it comes from a special fund or not, it's not gonna look good. And maybe this needs to be postponed and looked at further at a later date. Because this is not a good time to be spending money on City Hall when you got streets the way they look right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm gonna throw this back to Andy or Brian, or it's on your, is this yours or is this Chad's?
It's Brian's.
Brian's, okay.
Yes, sir. This is, this parking lot is a, is a combination of several areas that we'll be doing. One, it includes grinding of existing, removing. Also, it includes doing where ADA areas, upgrading those particular areas. It also includes the sheriff's department's areas and gates. It, we actually have, in a couple different areas, there is removal of asphalt and adding, and so it's not just a slurry seal. There are several areas where this parking lot has deteriorated in such areas that we're actually having to do, construct new sections in that parking lot to bring it to the proper standard based on the city engineer's evaluation. It also does include crack and seal, striping. And it includes the emergency exit gates for the sheriff's department, including the loops in there. And in, in, in that case, we're also going to be doing some work on their gates that opens up for the emergency program. We are, we're having issues with the actual gates and so this will be making those necessary repairs to the parking lot as well.
So that's, and just my question, that's all within the $101,000 there?
That, that's correct. And they were the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. Greg?
Thank you, Ted. Actually, a while ago, I had the same concerns as Mrs. Leonard, that... that the perception of this, actually before we got the full staff report, I had some concerns on how that looked, you know, compared to a lot of the conditions in the rest of the city on our roads. And I'll say this with, with further review, and, and I did spend time with Mr. Petrie and go through the bid documents, and there's a couple of areas that had concerned me that I think need to be mitigated and corrected, and that was the, the gates at the Sheriff's Department, insulation of the gate tracks, motors are, were originally done incorrectly, the wrong way, the cheap way, and it needs to be done the right way. And, and that is a relatively, not expensive fix, but it's a cost to do things the correct way. And that, that need, needs to be taken care of. So that part I understand. We were able to save money on the design of that gate track structure. In fact, we didn't have to spend any money on that, if I recall correctly. We're out of compliance on a lot of ADA requirements in the parking lot. And when you actually walk and look at the condition of it, it's, I think part of that expense is that it's so cut up. There's no way to really put down a lot of footage. It's a stop-and-go operation. And when people are tripping and falling in the parking lot, it kind of convinced me that, yep, it's probably that time to repair it. So Karen, I just want to let you know, I had the same concerns, but I believe I did my due diligence in reviewing the bid and all the cost elements. And then we also discussed some value engineering that could be done after contract issuance possibly. So I'm going to go ahead and support it at this time, but your concerns, I certainly hear them. Thank you.
Kevin? Robin? Berwin? And I want to share Councilman Newton's opinion on this. I worked at a facility, a city facility in San Jacinto, that unfortunately, the one thing they didn't do was take care of their parking lot. And we had somebody fall, and we ended up being a worker's comp and a safety issue. It cost the city of San Jacinto a lot more money to pay that worker's comp claim and the injury than it did to have repaired the parking lot. So unless there's any other comments?
No.
A motion to approve, I'll second.
Please vote. The motion passes unanimously.
Berwin, you pulled L?
Yes, I just got a question. Chad, over here, we're going to be taking, removing a lot of the wooden trail fence. Why can't our volunteer trail group remove that and keep most of it for the repairs that they're doing around town? I think they've got help that they could get those posts out of the ground and...
It's really a matter of timing. I mean, this, this type of operation is much faster than the volunteer group can do. And, because we're not only going to have to coordinate with the contractor to have him remove them, this is on California specifically. Then we're going to go through a staff to grade the property and then get out of the way so the contractor come right back and put the fencing in. So we're going to be staging where he's removing the fence, we come through, he goes to the next section, removes it. He can come back with his crews, work on the section we just finished. So it's really more of a timing thing to expeditiously get the project done. Otherwise, I mean, candidly, it just, it, there's quite a bit of fencing out there that would take quite a while to remove, because a lot of it's cemented in, and you've got to remove it the right way. And if they don't remove it the right way, then the contractor charges us again because they have impediments. By putting the onus on the contractor to do the removals and the installation, he doesn't have anything to come back to the city on to say we're delaying him or didn't complete something. Plus, if something gets damaged by him, i.e. a type of sprinkler systems that might be there, he takes care of it.
Okay, what, what does he do with what he removes?
I believe they just dispose of it.
Well, is there any way that you could talk to Bill and streets and trails and see if they can salvage a bunch of it to repair some of these older, these places around town that need repairing, because there's a bunch of them?
Most likely, the only thing we would salvage if they were going to is probably the rails, because usually the posts are not salvageable because of the way they're conditioned. So I mean, that is something we can, we can work on with the contractor and say that we want to try to salvage some of the, some of the rails. But the poles are almost never able to be salvaged because of the way they're, they've been, originally were placed, and they're rotted away.
Okay, well, would you and Bill get together and figure out how you can salvage some of those rails to reuse in other areas?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had. I'll make a motion to approve.
Under discussion. Berwin? I liked your idea, and I think we could handle it a lot simpler. If we just make a phone call to the contractor, because that material's just going to be dumped in his yard and, and just call him and ask him to set aside the rails.
I'll let Chad and Bill take care of that since they're the ones building it and everything.
All right.
But there's no, no, I don't have a problem with doing that. I just hate to see them get rid of it. And when they can use it to repair and replace.
All Bill has to do is walk across the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just to know that up in our Ingalls Park yard, there's probably 200 to 300 rails, fence rails there now, in two big bundles. So it's, it doesn't, it doesn't store well after it's been pulled. But we'll see. That, I'll entertain a motion. One motion, do you have a second? Do you have a second? It's all yours.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
Kevin, you have P?
Yeah, I just have some considerations about this, given that the community is looking at a tax measure, spending $388,000 right now. I have a concern. I'm in support of this because I had a long talk with Andy and a long talk with Chad. I totally understand the need, the necessity. I totally get that it's a different fund. But my hope is, is that if we do approve this today, people understand it is a, a different fund. And, but I, I kind of wish we would put this off maybe a few months. But at the same time, I also understand where the, the equipment and things like that is, that are sitting out in the, in the weather. It's not a good thing. So on the one hand, you want to make sure you provide and protect your equipment. On the other hand, you know, it's $388,000, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. So I just thought I would voice my concerns and make a motion for approval, as odd as that sounds. Yes.
Go ahead, we're discussing. It's your card.
I have a card.
Okay, go ahead.
It's funny you said that, because I was going to pull this item under the reasoning to compliment, and I know this will come as a shock to you, was to compliment you on that I think we're finally getting to some out-of-the-box thinking. And, and this project particularly going with a design-build scenario that, that I wanted to thank Chad for bringing me into this, that the original bids ranged from half a million dollars to $900,000. And then the apparent two low bidders had a, had an opportunity to come back in and discuss their designs. And we were able to, Chad was able to pick up another approximately $150,000 to bring this cost down into the $300,000 range. So instead of just preparing drawings, going out to bid and seeing where these numbers came, I, I think this approach is much more cost-efficient. It's faster, and it's smarter. And this is the thinking that I like to see staff doing. Now, along with that, to, my concern would be that any further delays or putting this project off, that especially with, like steel construction, steel prices are just going up dramatically, and that, that we've seen a 13% increase just in the last month, and square footage prices are going up about $5 a square foot. So I think that as the economy's heating up, these price increases are going to be greater and greater. So I think the timing is correct right now, the need's there, and I think in the big picture was the smart way to approach it. So.
Thank you. I did have one question, Steve, and if you found an answer, was the application of the setbacks when I asked you about that?
Yeah, the, this is actually in the LD zone, so it's not subject to the graduated setback standard for the A1 property. And the setback standard in the, in the LD zone is zero, and the height limit is no limit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got a clarification. I thank you. Now, the questions from council, and I, do we have a card?
Yes, Mayor, Karen Leonard.
Good evening, Karen. I'm sorry.
You did it on purpose, you know. Maybe we do need this, but, and I understand the money's coming from a different fund. However, unless you can get people to buy into that it's coming from a different fund, it's, you know what's going to happen. This is not a good time to be spending a penny if you're going to be asking people for a tax. So, you know, be prepared for that. This is not a good time. You need to try and push this back. I understand the cost of steel's going up, believe me, I know that. And I'm happy to see a local business get a project in town, too. That's pretty awesome. But this is not the time to be spending this kind of money. People don't understand that it's in separate funds and things like that. And this is going to come back and bite you on the butt. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
That's all the cards on this item?
Bring it back to the dais. Anything further, Berwin?
Motion.
Robin? Kevin? And Greg, you have a motion, we're good? I'm just making sure.
And once again, I understand Karen's concerns, and, and I certainly weigh that in my mind also, so.
Okay, we have a, a motion?
Do you have a second?
We have a second? Do we have a second? Kevin made a motion to approve?
Who's the second?
I'll second it.
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Trying to find the rest of the numbers. There they are. All right, Kevin, you had V, is it Victor?
Brian, just to follow up on how that came out, there were some questions about this bid last time, just fill us in.
Yeah, I did meet with the low bid contractor in discussion related to the bids, in particular areas 1, 2, and 3 on the equipment. His, in, in discussion of the issue, and basically looking at his numbers and what the cost of the equipment is, his, his cost includes the equipment and his shipping and, and also the freight. Whereas the other contractors, it seems like they moved their numbers over into the installation and demo part. So at the end of the day, the question was, would he adjust his cost? The answer was no. He was the lowest responsible bidder. And there, there was a couple of things we talked about after award of contract where we might be able to get some credits back, but I would have to award the contract before he'll sit down and discuss those. That, that would be me value engineering the demo to some degree.
Thank you.
Any further, any further questions to staff? Do we have any cards?
No cards, Mayor.
Do we have a motion to approve? Kevin?
Motion to approve.
First and a second?
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
And Greg, you pulled W?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so my understanding of this item is that this will allow us to completely dissolve the, the rest of our successor agency obligations. And I believe that has to be done by July or end of July of this year, Andy?
Yeah, so, Councilmember Newton, the idea is for the existing oversight board to allocate the remaining bond proceeds that belongs to the successor agency in the amount of $319,000. And that this current oversight board expires by June 30th. Following June 30th, there will be one countywide oversight board that will be overseeing actions like this. So we want to make sure that this small item is taken care of before that, that function transitions over to the county.
Okay, so, and, and I have no problem with that. What I was going to ask council is that the capital project for landscaping improvements on north side of River Road for approximately estimated allocation of $80,000, that we would modify that to, under a category called various improvements at River Road and Corridon in that same general area and what I would kind of call the gateway entrance at Corridon and River, that we just, just modify it and that we would specify the capital project at a later date, is what I'm asking. And I was going to ask you, Chad, if, if you've had a chance to look at these photographs, that you're going to need to get started on something pretty soon, and that is, when I, when I walked it and drove out there the other day, the telephone poles that have been cut down, and we're still waiting for the telephone company to relocate their lines and pull the poles. So if you get started on that now, that we'll be ready to do something with this project in about a year. So, and that's my request in my motion.
Under discussion. And I, I guess I'm misunderstanding this, because this was supposed to be going towards that improvement for the allocation, was supposed to be on between Corridon and Bluff or in that area. Well, correct, Brian?
This improvement's on the north side of River Road, and it would be basically across from the development there, and would go from Corridon to just past Sundance there.
Okay.
And it would, it would include the landscaping from Corridon to just, there's a little curve right there. It would improve removal of the, the palm trees there, improving that little bit of trail section there. And then it would include the trees and stuff along River Road there. It would be replacing it. So it's a landscape project, including irrigation and some other improvements in there.
And the reason I bring that up is because the Circle City Transmission Reliability Line is going to be crossing right, just, that would be north of Corridon, and where those new poles, if they go through, will be there.
Right. All this does is really improve that section where we actually have palm trees growing right in the middle of that.
Yeah, and it looks ugly. I agree with you.
Just, it cleans that area up.
Okay.
And that corner.
And the reason I bring it up, because that's also where those, those lines will be going through if they go through.
Right at that, yes.
Right at that?
At that part of the junction.
Yeah. So, and the reason this, and for a little background, when this was discussed, that, most of that area is taken care of by Landscape Maintenance One, correct?
That's correct.
And, and our meeting with them in the springtime, earlier on, they actually, the residents here actually agreed to fund, not the trees, but at least the, the sustain them and the irrigation and the, and the improvements on, right?
That's correct. And they said in 2019, we bring this back, they would like to increase that fund to include all of the...
include all of the tree trimming and all the landscape, improve the landscape maintenance, the actual sustainability of it.
Correct. All right, so I just wanted, go ahead.
How many residents were at that LMD meeting?
For that particular district, we had four residents that showed up.
Okay, just checking.
For that LMD, well, you normally had one. I know, it's frustrating.
Oh, and that only, yeah, only one, you're right.
Yeah.
One of the things in this particular plan, because of the slope that comes off of that area, this particular plan also helps with sound and light pollution for those residents, which is one of the issues that has come up before. So what we tried to do is look at a way of trying to mitigate that, but yet also improve the entryway or gateway into that side of Norco.
Are there any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
Okay. So Greg, you pulled it?
Under discussion. I think it's very important. I had thought that we were talking about maybe doing some sort of a monument of some kind as a gateway into the community, but I think that, I talked to a lot of the residents over there, and I know they didn't show up to the meetings, but they have quite an internet connection. And I think they pretty much all would like to find some way to mitigate the light pollution and also the noise pollution. And I think this is a good solution, particularly when they're willing to pick up the maintenance costs after the fact. So I'm hoping that we will push, we'll move this forward. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We had a motion. Do you want to continue with your motion on that?
Yeah, that, yeah, I guess what I wanted to reiterate is, part of this project is fine, and I just want to say to modify it and wait till a later date, that you won't know till Prop 218 hearing in 2019 if the LMD accepts the additional cost or not.
That's correct. Currently, right now, the existing contract requires contractor to maintain those trees until 25 feet.
Right.
Anything above that, then, would go back to our city contractor, West Coast Arborist. So, but they're willing to pay that extra difference. We won't know that until 2019. But by the time these trees were some years down before they fully mature, in that height that we would be concerned for that 25-foot, but we would be collecting the fee for that in 2019.
I just want to not limit it just to that section, but to also clean up, what I'll refer to again, is kind of that gateway of Corridon and River Road. And at the same time, with the residents in that area, you have trees on the other side, on the Lewis Development, that are also growing, that are going to mitigate light and noise from the shopping center. So that's, I just want to hold it back to a later date and think out maybe just a more involved plan with it.
Andy, I'll ask you this question. If we all, if we can approve the funding, but just hold off on the project, or is there stipulation on when it can be?
Yes.
We can hold off and spend the money, just as long as we?
Specific details of the project.
Okay, so all we're doing is approving the successor agency, the funding, and then hold off on the project and that thing? Is that what you, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if, based on the recommendation by Councilman Newton, we could then come back with maybe a couple of different concepts that the council could then look at.
So could we clarify that motion, just make it clean?
My motion was pretty clean.
Yeah.
So read it here. Modify the capital allocation and specify a project at a later date.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
First and a second?
Here, this being a successor agency item, I'll do a verbal roll call vote. Board members Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Chair Hoffman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Wasn't too bad. All right, now we come to public comments. It's a time when persons in the audience wishing to address city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please, hopefully you've completed a speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so you may be recognized. Remember, it's not on the agenda, anything that's not on the agenda.
Daniella Segovia?
Good evening. I guess I drew the short straw, so I'm up here. As most people know, I had vowed that I would never step foot on Silver Lakes until it was close to even resembling what the citizens of Norco had been told to expect. But recently, I went to personally check out the equestrian facility at Silver Lakes on my own. But Councilmember Hannah would know because while I was there, he called Kathy and Kathy told you that she was giving me a tour. I, to say that I was disappointed would be an understatement. The facility, if one could actually call it a facility, is comprised of five arenas, two wash racks, two porta potties, and is far from meeting the required standards for a B-rated show, much less an A-rated show. And I'm not just talking breed shows, just an A-rated show, as it is barely suitable for the non-rated open shows, playdays, and gym can events that they're holding now. It is definitely far from what the city, citizens of Norco, were told and led to believe it was going to be. As Kathy Azaveto drove me to the location where the Phase 2 22-acre equestrian facility was going to be built, please note that I could not see the facility, as it was behind the chain link fence and the rock berm that I believe the Army Corps of Engineers had put up. And it's definitely far smaller than the 40-acre facility that he has in San Juan. All of this made me concerned because it looked as if, from the location, that it was going to be built either very extremely near or on top of the riverbed. I mention this because the citizens of Norco, as myself, had to have bins or a Western Waste provided container, showing that we were removing the manure off of our properties because the city was going to be fined because of the contamination of the water runoff. This is something that Brandis is currently dealing with, that is San Juan Capistrano location. I need to go back to the 22 acres and inquire as to when the city council, the current city council, voted on giving these 22 acres to Brandis. When I say giving, I also mean including, but to me, it's what the man is paying. He's basically getting it. I remember when it was tabled to be addressed at a later date, but I don't remember ever being here and/or hearing about it being approved. Now, according to Brandis's bio in the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnerships, he states that by the end of 2018, that his sports complex will be complete, as it will be 150 acres, which means he's already assuming, if I can use that word, I hate using that word, that he's getting that 22 acres. And it really just begs the question with regards to where the equestrian facility is going to be built and the chances that if we were going to get fined as the citizens of Norco, if we didn't produce, show proof that we had manure bins, that he's not going to have manure bins, and who's going to end up paying the fine? It's going to be us, the citizens of Norco. More of our hard-earned tax dollars going to this facility. I also wonder what is going to happen if the DA follows through on the grand jury report. And as a citizens of Norco, a citizen of Norco, and for those that I have spoken with and those who responded to my post, which I put up regarding this, and it was over 200, nobody, if past or present council members and/or employees?
Daniella, I need you, I need you to wrap it up.
I'm down to the last paragraph. And if they, if this is something that they need to be represented by council, we don't want to have to pay it. I keep thinking if only the past and present city council members would have invested even the half a million dollar fine that the city was charged into, for its wrongdoings, into Ingalls and just given Brandis his 122 acres for his sports complex, especially his youth soccer facility, to which is his dream, as he has stated several times, we might actually have a decent equestrian facility as opposed to having nothing. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing.
In reference, no, I gotta?
Wait, one last thing. I would like to know what is necessary for a citizen to call for a forensic financial audit of the city of Norco's books?
Thank you. In reference to your, on the Silver Lakes project, Deputy City Manager Brian Petrie can answer the rest of the questions on that, on the Silver Lakes project and the EIR and the project there on those 22 acres. I'm sure he can help you.
So did we give him?
No, I can't. That's all I can tell you. Okay.
So I'm supposed to find you later on?
He'll give you, he'll give you the information on the 22 acres.
Well, I'm here representing at least 400 of your constituents, so.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Justin DeWell.
Good evening, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Here to provide an update from Assemblymember Cervantes's office. The legislature passed this year's budget bill last week, so we'll head to the governor's desk now. Assemblymember Cervantes was able to secure some, some funding for our region, so I want to highlight those items. Assemblymember Cervantes, along with Senator Roth, secured $2.9 million in ongoing funding for two newly created judgeships for the Riverside County Superior Court, intended for the Corona courthouse. So since the Great Recession, the Corona courthouse has only been open one day a week, as I'm sure many of you are aware. And this new funding allocation will allow that courthouse to reopen as a full-time judicial facility, five days a week. She also secured $5 million in one-time funding for a new early childhood education center at Norco College. And $1 million in one-time funding for a new workforce development center at Norco College. The closest one currently, to my knowledge, is in downtown Riverside, so we'll have one now in Western County, so that's, that's really good. As far as her bills, I'll just bring up a couple. AB 1882, her bill that will make it a felony to contact or communicate with a minor over the internet with the intent to commit human trafficking. That bill did pass out of the Senate Public Safety Committee this week on a bipartisan vote. Will now move to Senate appropriations. Her bill, AB 1994, requiring county jails to notify the Department of Justice when registered sex offenders are admitted to or released from their facilities. That bill also passed unanimously out of Senate Public Safety and will move to appropriations as well. Briefly, a couple of upcoming events we're hosting in the district, June 22nd, which is Friday, we're hosting resources within reach at the Casa Grande Senior Apartments in Corona with the Riverside County Office on Aging and Senior Medicare Patrol. That'll start at 10:00 a.m. July 18th, we're hosting another senior scam stopper at Valencia Terrace at 1:00 p.m. in Corona. And briefly, I know I'm almost out of time, I want to let the council know, I've told some of you already, but I want to let you all know that I will be leaving the Assembly member's office in a couple of weeks, effective July 6th. I'm going on to pursue my master's in public administration at USC. So I just, I want to let you know, it's been quite an honor serving this community for the past year and a half, working with the council. I've learned a lot from you all, so I thank you very much for that. I don't know yet who will replace me, but I'm sure it'll be a very competent individual, and I'll make sure that we have a point of contact with our office moving forward as I transition out. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Justin, and good luck on your endeavors. I'm sure, I speak for the rest of council, is that we've appreciated your attendance here at all the meetings and all the events, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
All right, appreciate it.
Jim Pollard?
Good evening, Councilmember.
Good evening, Jim.
I have a couple of pictures. Yeah, I want to, I want to talk about the Circle City project, and you can look at what that looks like today and what Edison wants to do in the future. I'm not against the project, I would just like to see it go forward underground. And this is a gateway to Norco, and this is the way it looks for the last 40 years. They've added wires to that, I've lived there 41 years, they've added wires, and they've added equipment on the poles, as you can see. I just think that it would detract from the city if we can't force them. I don't know if we can force them, but want them to put it underground. You know, I've dealt with Agent Worring's over the years, they, if this is going to be a health problem to us, they'll never admit to it, and how do we know? We've seen water problems in Michigan, and I just think that we need something better done at this time. Edison doesn't do any weed abatement on that hill or clean it up at all. The city, when I first moved there, I got notices from the fire department where I had to clean it up. That's when River Road was only two lanes. Now Cal Fire comes soon, does a cleanup, when, I guess Chad has them sent out over there, which is great. But it's just an ugly section of the city, and it's a gateway. You look on one side and see Corona, and you look on our side and you see a hill of weeds and poles and four ugly palm trees. And I would like to see next Wednesday, June 27th, at the Circle City Center, support for Norco to maybe put this project underground. And there's other lines that they could, there's other ways they could send that property, or those lines also, but I'm, it appears that they're going to be in my backyard. We got notices of this from Edison here, two weeks ago, when I came forward and brought it up, and when the letter was addressed to occupant, everybody on that street got an occupant letter. And they just looked at it, and my neighbors don't even know how this is going to impact their property values. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Tom Eifler?
Good evening, Tom.
This works out great. This coincides with Jim. I happen to be his neighbor. I am speaking to you tonight with regards to my concerns with the Edison project, the Circle City project, that is taking place in Norco and surrounding cities. I know that Norco and all the other cities involved are fighting against this project and are trying to keep it from happening. I feel as though this is a waste of time, money, and resources that will only end with defeat. Edison is much bigger than Norco, they are much bigger with more resources and money than Norco and all the cities that are involved together. With that being said, I would like to see cities involved pull all of our resources together and come up with a list of demands that will satisfy all parties involved. I live on Santa Anita Road, and I back up to River Road between Second and Corridon. I am one of the 25 houses that this project will directly affect due to the power poles being located physically in our backyards. We live under, we live directly under these power lines. Even though I am very upset and frustrated at this Edison proposal of adding more power lines and bigger poles, I do believe there can be a solution or compromise to the situation. The first thing that infuriates me is the way that Edison went about notifying the residents, especially those 25 homes that are directly involved with such, such as mine. I would not know anything about this project if it wasn't for my good friend and neighbor telling me about it. We all received letters in regards to this project, but the problem is that they were all addressed to occupant and looked like junk mail that I normally throw out. Even if they were addressed to the individuals living in one of these homes, it still would not have been good enough because a good portion of these homes are rentals. So the owners still would not have known about this project so that they would have been able to have a voice on it. been able to have a voice on it. Edison should have sent certified letters to each property owner, not tenants, to verify that they were notified. It seems almost as if they were trying to slide this project through with as little input from the public as possible. The next issue I have is the amount of power that will be going through these lines. We already have days and evenings that you can actually hear the humming or sizzling from the existing lines, depending on the weather and/or the amount of power traveling through them. I have a pole with what I think are transformers mounted on them in my backyard. They have sparked and caught fire twice in the years that I have lived here. There have been lots of cases documented over the years of complaints on health issues like cancer, tumors, extreme migraines, and many other issues caused by the bombardment of EMFs. And now they want to increase the power flow by 100 times or more. For every report that Edison has showing that that power lines are safe to live near, there's a report that will show that they are not. Edison did an environmental impact report on this project and deemed it as not a threat to the environment, but they did not provide a property value impact report, a health hazard report, or an aesthetics report, all of which would be great concern to us homeowners. Even as bleak as this may seem, I think there is an easy and affordable way to make this a project that all parties can be happy with. Simply take the existing lines and the new ones and run them underground wherever they are in direct conflict with residential property. Edison will claim that it is not cost-effective to do so, to do, but I say it is affordable. Good money only gets thrown away and wasted when lawyers and court systems are involved. Besides someone, besides...
We've got to finish it up, Tom. We've got to finish it up.
Okay. Besides if someone, this isn't going to benefit, somebody's going to benefit at the end of this line. They're going to make revenue off of this, which would easily afford to pay for putting it underground. It's 4/10ths of a mile, 25 houses long, and that's all I ask. I don't know about any other residents on this plan, because I'm not familiar with the plan, because again, I threw all my stuff away, not knowing that this was so important, you know? The other thing, real close in closing, I think Norco also needs to step up and take notice how neglected River Road is from Second Street to Corydon. If you drive that section, like Jim said, if you look at Corona, it looks great. You look at Norco, it looks like a ghost town. I work in Yorba Linda in Anaheim on occasion, and they look more like horse property than we do, and we're Horsetown USA. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Andy, did we get notification of Circle City line when they're doing inputs?
Yes, I have notification.
Okay, all right.
As a city.
As a city. We, I know that this city has regarding that, has replied back in 2017 regarding both the Riverside and the Circle City lines, and we get further information from Circle City on that line, but it is available online to Southern California Edison. Any more cards?
I'd also ask for that to be agendized, but we're looking at a June 22nd date now.
No more cards.
Okay. I'll close the open session, probably comments, and so, Andy, well, you get us information on that, so we can...
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And going into 5A Legislative Matters. Colin, that's yours. No new evidence on the 5A, the ordinance number 1037?
Can you read on it? Believe was passed without change. Is there a need for a staff report?
No, just read it.
You don't have to read the whole thing. Just read that. Great, thank you. Okay. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, adding Chapter 12.05 Street Opening and Pavement Restoration Regulations to the Norco Municipal Code, Code Amendment 2018-03.
Do we need a motion to approve? At first and a second?
That motion passes unanimously.
And this is the second one with the, does that also be the new one? Or is that, no, that's the second thing?
This is also a second read. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, amending Chapter 18.57 Wireless Communications Facility Regulations of the Norco Municipal Code, Code Amendment 2018-04.
So, we have a motion to approve?
Please approve.
At first and a second?
Please vote.
And moving on to 6A, appointments to various city commissions and Economic Development Advisory Council. Cheryl, that's yours.
Yes, Mayor, City Council members, this item is the city's annual recruitment to fill scheduled vacancies on the various city commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. These are the 10 scheduled vacancies that will expire June 30th of 2017, or excuse me, 2018. Apologize for that typo. We have one vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two on the Planning Commission, one on the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission, and six on the Economic Development Advisory Council. These are requirements to serve on the city commission and the Economic Development and Advisory Council. The recruitment began on April 23rd of 2018 through a public notice. We also shared the information on the city website and through social media and eBlast as well. The deadline for applicants to submit applications to the city clerk's office was June 7th at 6:00 p.m. The city clerk's office received a total of 16 applications. There was one application received after the deadline, and that was for the Planning Commission. It is not included in your review of applications. Here's a list of applicants for the various commissions and Economic Development Advisory Council. The, we have some applicants here in the audience who wish to comment to the city council, and if, or there are no questions, I can go ahead and take those cards.
Are there any questions of Cheryl or the staff before we hear the applicants? Hearing none, let's go with the applicants.
Yvonne Duran.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members. My name's Yvonne Duran. I am a one-year Norco resident. I grew up in Ventura County. I saw this opportunity to become part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I've been in Parks and Recreation for 13 years. I currently work for the City of Laverne. My degree is in Recreation and Tourism Management, did live on the island of Maui, did the tourism end. But I come to you today because I know there is a current vacancy. I would hope you would consider me as the appointee to that position. I know there is an incumbent currently, but I feel as though I will bring Norco some new ideas and new outlooks in terms of recreation. I know you guys are working on some park stuff, because I definitely seen some playgrounds. I do have some trail background, as I worked for the Park District in Camarillo for the majority of my life, until I moved here, got married to a Marine, and I'm in Norco now. So, we live on, right by the high school on Corona Avenue. I love it. My neighbors are great, so I do hope you would consider me as part of your Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Jim Pollard.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm applying for the Street and Trails Commission, and I've lived here in Norco for 40 years, and I've been going to the Street and Trails meeting and meeting with Chad and Bill and the program that they put together, and I'm very proud of that. And I just would like to be part of that and part of this community even more, and see if we can get a better trail system completed and done. And I have three grandkids that I let live with me, and I just want to see that this lifestyle stays the Norco lifestyle for them to grow up into also. But anyway, thank you for being, listening to me.
Thank you, Jim.
Corinne Holder.
Good evening, Corinne.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I am again putting in an application for Parks and Recreation Commission, and I would just love to have your support on that. I've been here a few years, and I do feel we have a couple of new people on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it has been really wonderful to have some new blood in there, get things changed up a little bit. But I do feel like we have a little tough road ahead coming up on us, and I would like to make sure that some of our history that we've been working on and some of the knowledge that I have stays with that commission. I'll still be here either way, so I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne.
Susan Olmsted Bowen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilpeople, and I want to thank you for giving me this time to talk to you about my qualifications. I'm a CPA, and I have a business here in the City of Norco. I have a master's degree in public administration from the University of Laverne. I've worked with government and nonprofits for the past 16 years, so I have the knowledge and experience needed to work on projects and understand how government works. I've also worked extensively with councils and boards. I would like to volunteer my time and knowledge to help develop and promote the economic health of the City of Norco. I support the potential revenue measure, and again, thank you for your time, and I'm asking for your support by appointing me to the Economic Development Advisory Council, EDAC.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Robert Leonard.
Robin?
Good evening, Robert.
I'm Robert Leonard. I just want to say that I was, I'm proud to be on the Planning Commission. I've been there for almost eight years. I took over the last part of Greg's. I think we have a really great nucleus with the Planning Commission between all the commissioners, and I've learned a lot. I have learned a lot of things as far as understanding a little bit more on what the Planning Commission is all about, zoning and codes. I have a lot more to learn. I have a willingness to learn. And being, that being said, I think that I would enjoy taking another four years. I know it's a lot of work, but I hope that you guys would understand that and give me another shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Vicki Leonard.
Good evening, Vicki.
Good evening. I have served on the EDAC Committee for the last four years, and as the only small business owner on the group, I think I bring some information and some insight to what's going on economically with the people that come into town. I would like to serve again another four years, and you need someone who is a contrarian and will speak of, and I have enjoyed serving, and I think that we have a really good group of people, and we've really cultivated what EDAC is supposed to do, and I think we're ready to really step up and do our job, and I would be an honor to serve again, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Mayor, that's all the cards I have, but I do want to...
I can ask, is there any of the other applicants that would like to speak now? If not, all right, come on up.
I don't like coming up here, to be honest with you.
Go ahead for the audio. You state your name.
Nicole Hanson. So, I saw the opportunity to serve in the EDAC when I got my application, and just going through remodel and experience everything and the learning opportunity that I had dealing with everyone in this city, I thought it would be a good idea and a good chance for me to give back to the economic part of small businesses that are in our community and anybody that wants to expand or, you know, needs help with their business, that's something that I can help with. So, my family and I have been in the community for about 25 years. We've dealt with a lot of the departments in the Corona Council building, the building on Main Street, and just moving forward, I would like to explore my opportunity in helping Norco and doing what I can do to keep the community the way that it is. So, if I can help, I would appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Wasn't that bad, was it?
No, you know...
Okay, you're fine. You're fine. All right.
Mayor, I just want to note that I did receive a comment from Mr. John Wrigler. He apologized for not being able to attend tonight. He had a prior commitment, and Mr. Pat Malone is out of town, so.
All right, thank you. All right. Bringing it back to the dais. Any questions of staff, or do you want to go ahead and vote? You're going to distribute.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
You know, the, and I always say this, if you don't get appointed to a commission this time, please keep trying. I didn't get appointed to the Parker Rec Commission twice, ended up serving 10 years. Just keep trying. We need volunteers. Once again, we have this incredible body of people that are applying for positions, and so, please, next time, apply if you don't get it, and if you do get it, we're sorry.
While the city clerk is tallying that up, and just to reiterate what Councilman Bass said, we have, our commissioners, we rely on them a lot up here, so if you don't get selected this time, please reapply. There's other things come up. Don't be a stranger. We get to know you, and we'd like you to come here and put your two cents in for us too. That's what that podium is for you too. And then if nothing else, next month, I think we open it up for the City Council, there'll be two seats in November, so. I know, I know. Yeah, this is pretty soon. Call break, though. Okay. Again. By this item?
Okay, Mayor and City Council members, for the Parks and Recreation Commission, I have five votes for Corinne Holder. For the Planning Commission, five votes for Robert Leonard. Five votes for John Riggler. For Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission, five votes for Jim Pollard. And for the Economic Development Advisory Council, five votes for Antonio Beretto. Five votes for Nicole Hanson. Five votes for Victoria Leonard. Five votes for Patrick Malone. Five votes for Chris Muller, and five votes for Susan Olmsted Bowen.
Congratulations to all the applicants. And while I want to thank all the applicants, congratulations to those people that were appointed to their four-year slots. And anyway, yeah, we're going to take a break here in a minute. So Cheryl, do you have anything else?
No, Mayor.
All right, and a few, on Parker Recs, well, you know, if you're in EDAC, get ahold of Roger Grody. And for the Streets and Trails, Chad there, so... Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute, as a nine o'clock. All right, 7A, Public Hearings. Approval and adoption of the Norco, City of Norco Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19, authorizing appropriations area. I don't see the finance officer, unless she's wearing a uniform, but I think Andy's got it. You're sitting in her chair. See what happens when you sit in that chair?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, yes, Gina, our finance officer became sick and had to go home. And so what I will do is I'll run through a few slides of PowerPoint on two items. The first one we are going to tag is the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 budget, operating budget. As you know, members of the City Council, we have had three study sessions of two hours each to discuss this operating budget, as well as a capital improvement program budget. So this evening, we are ready to finally recommend a final budget to you for approval, starting with the operating budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2018-2019, the operating budget, is approximately $13.7 million. The budget included, that makes up this $39.7 million, includes the city's general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, gas tax fund, MPDS, as well as miscellaneous grants and CDBG and AQMD funds. Of course, the general fund is the city's primary operating fund with total projected expenditures of $20.8 million and the projected revenues of $19.5 million approximately. So this brings us to a projected deficit in the general fund of $1.3 million, and this deficit is recommended to be made up by drawing from general fund, existing general fund balance. With a draw of $1.34 million from the general fund reserves, we will be looking at $9.54 million at the end of fiscal year 2018-19. What we project, we will begin the fiscal year, end the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, with $10.8 million in general fund balance, approximately $10.9 million. And after we draw the $1.3 million, we estimate that we'll be left with $9.5 million. With respect to the water fund, total projected expenditures is $10.7 million approximately, and the total projected revenues is $12.9 million. On the sewer fund, which is another major operating fund of the city, we project total expenditures of $6.7 million and total revenues of $7.9 million. In terms of additional information pertaining to expenditures, what the key items that are driving the expenditures that are projected for this fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, this is really a status quo budget with respect to the general fund. We're maintaining existing service levels, and we are maintaining employment at the same level that we have them for fiscal year 2017-2018. In terms of projecting expenditures, this budget that is recommended for approval this evening includes a 6% contractual services, the increase of 6% in contractual services. An additional $471,000 increase is included in the budget to provide full year funding for one traffic enforcement officer, as well as one community service officer. The hiring date anticipated for these two positions will be close to the beginning of this coming fiscal year. The sheriff budget is increasing by approximately 9.37% as compared to the amended budget for fiscal year 1718. The reason that number looks high, that percentage increase, is the traffic enforcement officer, as well as the community services officer, those positions were included in the current year budget but remained unfilled for the current fiscal year. So when we bring in those positions next fiscal year, that accounts for that significant increase in the budget when it's compared to what we have in the amended budget for fiscal year 1718. The county fire contract, we are projecting an increase of 4% based on the comparison between the FY 2017 budget and the projected FY 1819 budget. One of the things that I like to point out here, because of the delay in the timing of payments for actual county fire contracts, I suspect that by the time we get the actual expenditures for fiscal year 2017-2018, the actual expenditures are likely to be lower than what we currently are reflecting in this budget, and that is why that 4% seems a little low. But if you compare it to what the actual numbers are going to be at the end of the fiscal year, it might be a little higher. But on the other hand, that means the current fiscal year 2017-2018 budget is going to benefit. This budget also includes pass-through pension rate increases estimated to be about $215,000 for next year, for a total of the cost of pension benefits that is applicable to the general fund is approximately $1.3 million. It is important to note that city employees are continuing to pay their full share of employee portion of pension contribution, so the city is not contributing any amount to pay the portion of contribution that is required of employees. This recommended budget also continues to provide a total of $300,000 set aside to pay down post-retirement healthcare liability. Although the accrued liability has increased, the projected unfunded liability is projected to decrease due to the value of assets that has been accumulated to pay these liabilities. Those asset values have increased from $7.9 million this current fiscal year, or last fiscal year, to estimated $9 million as of current date. The budget also includes an increase in the cost to provide water utility to the general fund, the portion of it that is paid by the general fund. The recommended budget includes 3% salary adjustments for employees that we have various memorandum of understanding between the city and the employees. With respect to the MPDS fund, in past years, the city has had to make transfers from the general fund to cover the cost of doing activities needed to comply with MPDS requirement. For this coming fiscal year, there is a sufficient amount in the fund balance for that particular fund, and there is no recommended transfer from the general fund to make up the gap in projected expenditures and revenues in the MPDS fund. One of the things that is not reflected in this budget by way of revenue is $108,000 that previously has been paid to the city of Norco by the Department of Finance as a reimbursement to the city's general fund for pension and retiree medical expenditures related to those employees that performed services for the redevelopment, the Aldair, prior to the agency being dissolved. Again, we have an ongoing dispute with the Department of Finance, and as a result, we are not reflecting in the budget to that reimbursement of $108,000. In terms of recap, with respect to the expenditure for the general fund, as you can see, this is the composition of the total general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2018-2019 totaling $20.8 million again, and the related projected increase for all of those, for each of the respective programs that are included in the general fund. Overall, total general fund expenditures on a budget-to-budget comparison is estimated to increase by 2.16%. On the revenue side, here are the key items that are impacting revenue projection in the general fund. Overall, we are projecting a general fund revenue increase of $217,000. That is obviously basically revenue situation that is flat, 1.13% increase when compared to fiscal year 1718. In terms of, again, the revenue projection for next year, the revenue numbers for the city plateauing, sales tax. Of course, we always try to project that conservatively, but given the run that we have had with respect to sales tax growth, we believe the numbers that are in the recommended budget with respect to sales tax projection are pretty reasonable based on the information we have today. Property tax is slightly increasing because of the residual property tax that the city, as a successor agency, receives from the county. The debt service that is paid to pay debt obligations for the former redevelopment agency debt, that is going down because of the bond refinances that we did during the fiscal year. Franchise fees, the only increase that is being projected in that category of revenue is West Management franchise fees. That is, I have to point out here that this will be the last increase in the increase that was approved by the City Council and was being spread over five fiscal years. Community development revenues, again, we conservatively project those based on anticipated levels of activity, building activity in the city. If information becomes available that justifies that those numbers need to be revised, we will deal with that as part of the media budget adjustment process. Again, total general fund revenues for FY 2018-2019, we are projecting $19.4 million. As you see, again, the sales tax is by far the largest category there of revenue that comes into the general fund. Again, because of the run we have had, and we are projecting a slight decrease on a budget-to-budget between fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year, the current fiscal year 2018. Again, the total number of projected increase in the general fund revenue is the 1.13%. So essentially, again, revenues for the general fund is projected to remain flat for next fiscal year 2018-2019. The other things I need to point out in the staff report and in the presentation, if you recall, as part of the budget workshop, I recommended several items that we need to, several items to be reduced from the general fund. Those reductions that were authorized by the City Council, they have been now incorporated into the general fund budget, the recommended budget. We started with about $1.9 million when we began this process. As a result of those reductions, totaling $430,591, that's how we come down to the projected deficit of $1.34 million. Additionally, we have recognized additional expenditure estimates in the revenue that totals about $87,000 in reduction outside of those that were identified in the list that I recommended when we went through the budget workshop. Again, the net effect of all of these reductions or adjustments since we began the budget workshop is that the projected deficit has been reduced from $1.9 million to $1.345 million. This is a schedule that provides an overview of those reductions that we have talked about during the budget study sessions that are now incorporated into the recommended budget. A recap of the projection for general fund balance, as I stated at the beginning, the numbers obviously are not going in our direction. Looking at when we ended fiscal year 2017, these are numbers that were audited and reported back to the City Council. The general fund balance at that particular point was $11.4 million approximately. This current fiscal year, fiscal year 1718, we are estimating our total revenues to be $19.5 million and total estimated expenditures of $20 million. So what that means is we are drawing about $469,000 from the fund balance we began this current fiscal year with. And for the upcoming fiscal year, 2018-2019, we are expecting, again, to draw from that general fund balance $1.345 million. And that is how we arrive at the estimated fund balance for June 30, 2019 of $9.5 million. Some of the highlights of what is going on with the water fund, again, the water fund revenues are based on the July 1 rate increase. There is a rate increase that is going to go into effect on July 1, and that is the basis of the projection for revenue. With that being said, the working capital, which is the amount of money that is left over after expenditures are paid in the general fund, is expected to increase to $7.4 million by June 30, 2019. However, this amount is earmarked... However, this amount is earmarked, 2.6 million of it is going to go to rate stabilization and reserve fund. The rate that was approved by the city council and the accompanying resolution requires $2 million by 2026, and the total allocated to reserve will be $22 million in FY 1819. So the difference between that amount we set aside to fund the rate stabilization reserve, which is approximately $5.4 million, will be transferred to the Water Capital Project Fund to be used to fund capital improvement projects in the water fund. Currently, we have over $20 million in outstanding water projects that needs to be funded. With respect to the sewer fund, the projection is based on the current rate structure. The approved rate also includes a proposed rate increase in the sewer fund that is supposed to go into effect this July 1. However, the staff is recommending that this increase be deferred as a result of the significant improvement that we have seen in the financial position of the sewer fund. We have until, I believe, another couple of years to implement those rates, the rate increase if need be. The sewer fund currently is in a very good financial position, although that money is earmarked for capital projects. But based on the total amount of capital projects we have outstanding and the revenues that are projected to come in in the future, we don't believe is necessary at this particular point to go ahead with that rate increase that is supposed to go into effect July 1 of 2018. That concludes the presentation, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Council, have any questions of staff? Berwin?
No.
Robin?
Nope.
Kevin? Greg?
Sure. Andy? On general fund budget reductions, the, under building maintenance, the $59,500 reduced part-time staffing. And I thought we had talked about...
Let me highlight that. That is a typo. That is outside contracts. I have it in a note here. Part-time staffing is not reduced, it's out of outside contracts.
Okay.
Deals with us renegotiating our janitorial contract.
So this is a typo?
Yes, it is.
A typo in the staff report is, doesn't show reducing part-time staff on this slide here, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it says reduce part-time staff. That's not the case.
It's actually outside contracts.
Okay, I'm fine with that. And then, right above it, senior citizens. I'm assuming I was the minority opinion on the party partners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So no more party partners. Okay.
However, if we get funded from...
Somebody.
A generous...
Right.
I'm working on it.
Suddenly the...
No, and I understand.
Implement our program.
And I understand. You know, Andy, I look at this and, you know, the overall 1.4, $966,000 of that is public safety with the additional deputies and the increases for sheriff and Cal Fire. So I get that part of it, so it's not bothering me as much as it should in a way, but we had a previous discussion, and this says the 1.4 to be covered by using revenues or fund balance, or, I'm sorry, by using reserves or fund balance. In our budget workshop, we had talked about some of the internal funds, and I think the one I brought up was on vehicle replacement that seemed to have a very healthy balance is... Could you elaborate a little more on that?
We did have discussions about the balances in the equipment replacement fund, as an example. And what we discussed at the particular time is, given the fact that one of the reductions that we have here to reduce the deficit in the, projected deficit in the general fund is to stop making contributions to that equipment replacement, equipment replacement fund, that, in essence, accomplishes the same thing as going back to that fund and trying to transfer money from the equipment replacement fund to the general fund, at least for general fund-funded equipment. Keep in mind, a lot of the money that is in the general, in that equipment replacement fund belongs to water and sewer fund, and those cannot be transferred to the general fund. So we have left the equipment replacement fund alone for now. Obviously, that is subject to future consideration, whether it's part of the media budget process or part of the next year's budget process. But again, given the fact that we are deferring the contributions to the equipment replacement fund and the need, again, to make sure that we have sufficient amount of money to replace this equipment when they come due, that is why we have not, we are not recommending a transfer from that equipment replacement fund to, back to the general fund.
What would you say percentage-wise in the vehicle replacement fund that would be allocated to the water sewer fund that could not be spent?
I would, my guess is this. If you take out what is in the water and sewer fund, and you take out what is already earmarked for fire engine replacement, which we still make that contribution to Cal Fire, that will probably make up 80% of what is in that fund, if not higher.
Okay. Looks like it's going to swing your way next. The pendulum, I'm looking at you. Okay.
That's it, Greg? I have one question, and this is sort of on that. With almost 20 million of this budget dealing with the water and the sewer fund, and I guess we had talked about the, you're going to come back with the reclaim water program or workshop. Is that still in the works so we can look at this thing? I mean, it's eaten up 20, almost 20 million dollars of our budget, so anytime we can get some better way to handle this thing.
Yeah, the intent was to try to come back and do a general, like, mini-workshop to give the status of the, of the existing recycle water system and our future plans related to RICRA and use of that water, et cetera, in either the second meeting in July or one of the first two meetings in August, so we can get that on the table and get council's feedback on which direction we can, we'll probably be heading with our recycle water system.
Because, you know, you said RICRA too, and he sits on the chino de salto, and it's not getting any cheaper. So anything we can do to reduce those expenses would be, for future consideration, probably be a big deal. Are there any cards on this, Cheryl?
No cards on this item.
Does anybody else have anything of staff or want to make any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion, have a motion to approve a second?
That motion passes unanimously.
I want to thank staff and for all the work and our, and council members for the extra six hours of doing workshops on this thing. It's a tough decision to make, and I'm glad we made it. All right, moving on, 7B. That's the capital approval.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, this is a recommendation for you to approve, to approve Resolution Number 2018-37 pertaining to the city's five-year capital improvement program budget. And again, we have had a study session to review the details in the CIP budget. The various capital improvement program funds that are included here include fire improvement fund, successor agency projects, which is the item that you looked at earlier this night, general government projects, park improvement projects, building facilities projects, storm drain projects, trail improvement projects, water improvement projects, and sewer facilities project. In terms of the items that have changed since we did the budget workshop, the outline in the staff report and includes the following, the water improvement fund increased by $125,000 for the new storage building at Public Works Yard. Sewer facilities increased by a similar amount, and this is to recognize the difference between the contract amount and what was previously included in the preliminary budget Street improvement project has remained the same at $6.2 million for FY 2018 to 2019. However, there have been some reallocations between projects as follows. There is a decrease of $25,000 from street widening to unspecified projects, and a decrease of $50,000 from rehab and overlay to unspecified projects, a decrease of $50,000 for reconstruction to unspecified projects, and a decrease of $25 for reconstruction for traffic signal at Hamner Avenue to Second Street. And finally, an increase of $150,000 for overhead street sign replacement. Chad, you can elaborate on this, but I believe this decreases and reclassifications as a result of perhaps bids that have come in since the initial project was, capital, CIP was looked at.
The reclassification was done solely because the fact that we're not going to expend the money we planned to spend this year because of delays from the manufacturer to provide the signs, the David Arms, et cetera, so pretty much all the work and actual funding will be done in next fiscal year. Since I didn't get accomplished this fiscal year and take that out, I needed to carry that money forward to the new fiscal year, so that's why the additional money's just been moved from one fiscal year to the other.
Okay. With that, there is no additional items to discuss, and we can take questions on the CIP project, budget.
Does council have any questions of staff? Berwin?
Come on.
Robin? Kevin? Greg?
Yeah, just, I need to refresh your course on the street improvement fund for $350,000 for a new traffic signal on the west side of Hamner, north of Citrus.
Yes, I read it, that is in the staff report, but what that is, is if you recall, council members, when Seville X opened and up until, still today, the exit, exiting traffic from the Seville X property on the north side of the property makes only a right turn towards East Val. This issue was brought up when the, when the park opened, as far as traffic making a right turn only to, towards East Val. As we looked at that situation at that particular time, and an interim solution was, was discussed and implemented, which consisted of allowing a U-turn back into Norco on Slashman.
Correct.
And since then, this project is still, has, is still being looked at for the potential to implement a traffic signal that might be used on a limited basis, especially on the weekends when there are big events at Seville X, so that traffic has the ability to make a left turn towards Norco instead of a right turn only to, to the city of East Val. As a result of that, they, this $350,000, based on preliminary, preliminary studies that have been done by this city engineer, is being included in the, in the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. It's not in the coming fiscal year, with the expectation that if the city receives money mainly from SB 1 funding, that, that signal would be considered. I must point out that there is still certain issues that must be resolved before that traffic signal can actually be implemented, because we don't own the entire right-of-way there. It would require the city of East Val granting us approval to use a portion of their right-of-way in order to install that traffic signal.
What, what portion of the right-of-way do we not own? I thought we owned the, the west side of Hamner.
The alignment...
By that north entrance.
The alignment that's required to properly put in the signal, it actually goes, portion that is into East Val, because the, the angle of the city property or the boundary line actually goes, doesn't go straight across Hamner, it actually goes diagonal, and we actually need to do our signal straight across, perpendicular. And so there's a portion of East Val we would need to get in order to assign, or the signal properly.
All right. So this is basically just to set aside, this is not a project at this time?
I'm sure we'll revisit this project in 2019, 2020 budget process, assuming that it's still a project, a viable project.
And, and what you're asking for is to, to set aside total funds of the, you're not anticipating any shared costs by the developer or any property owners?
At this particular time, this is again, a placeholder. Those are discussions that need to be had. When we get serious about the project, those are discussions we'll have to, to have in terms of determining what portions of the project, if any, that should be funded by, by Seville X or any other third party. Keeping in mind, this is not any item that they are conditioned at this particular time to pay for.
I'm just going to take it as a placeholder only, it's not a project at this time. Okay, thank you.
And that was my question too, so just to reiterate, we're not doing anything in this fiscal, in this upcoming fiscal year. This is just part of your five-year plan for...
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
We're just going to look at it, get the logistics of what would be involved if we were to do the project, and the idea is at some point bringing it back to council for a discussion to fire if they want to move forward with that type of project.
And then my, the other question would be, and I don't know if Andy or Chad, would this, even though you say it, would this actually qualify for SB 1 funds or Measure A funds, considering it's coming out of a, essentially a private driveway, a roadway?
It does qualify.
It does qualify, okay, I'm just, okay, I'm just, all right, makes me feel better. Any other questions of staff?
Just to add to that, there's actually been, I mean, even though this goes to 2019, there's been a lot of discussions just about this traffic light and stuff like that, whether it qualifies, doesn't qualify, so I'm not, I can't imagine we wouldn't talk to the developer and find every angle, but it's just been in discussions right now.
Okay. Are there any cards?
No cards, mayor.
No cards, hearing no cards, I'll go bring it back. No cards, hearing no cards, I'll go bring it back. Further discussion or motion?
Move.
Second? Have a first and a second?
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, this is a number C, ordinance first rate, ordinance of the city council, city council of the brown sewer system, we need to continue public hearing for this, so, excuse me, I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue this?
Move to continue.
First and a second?
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item D, confirming costs for spring weed abatement. Chief, you're up.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council and community, the item before you this evening is the 2018 spring weed abatement lot program has been completed, there were six parcels abated by the city contractor, and we're seeking authorization to invoice those property owners and failure to pay and, and lien, place liens on the properties. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Does council have any questions, staff, Berwin?
Come on.
Robin?
No.
Kevin?
I have one. I know I keep bringing this up, but it's been several years, the corner of California and Sixth Street, we have talked to you about it, I, truthfully, I know why we're not burning the house down, but I don't understand why we're not knocking those weeds down, I just, I just don't understand, and I've been asking literally for seven years, and I, it's just full of weeds. And I know it's, there's a lien and stuff, but it's not safe.
I understand, and it's not a vacant parcel, so it doesn't fall under any disorderance.
It's not a vacant parcel, no, it's lived in the house for 20?
No, the improvement in the structure on it, it is not. So it's currently in, in the code shop.
That's the first time I heard that. So do we have any program, timeline when this thing might happen, I mean?
It's code case, correct?
There is a code, existing code case on that property, I can't provide you a status report on that.
I don't mean to be a, you know, but it's just like, I keep hearing about it from the neighbors across the street, so.
Okay, regarding the thing table, Greg? Is everything? Okay, do you have any cards on the matter?
No cards on this item.
Having no cards on the matter, bring it back to the council. Any further discussion, or can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First and a second?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I believe this is a public hearing.
No, asked for cards.
He asked for cards?
Oh yeah.
It's getting late, sorry.
No, I'm trying to get through.
Please vote on this item. That motion passes unanimously.
All right, going through. And E, finally, we're getting down there. The, oh, this is the other one, in order to the city council, city of Norco, many in Norco Missile Co., chapter 3.24, bridge system, I need a motion to continue this till August 1st. Got a first and a second?
Please vote.
Okay, item eight, city council, city manager, staff communications. Robin, sir, we have nothing. Berwin?
Nothing.
Kevin?
Did we ever find out Brian, the seats on those things, were the angles such that we couldn't move the seats out of the side of Nellie Weaver Hall? Last I heard, that the problem is you couldn't get along enough area, or?
The, the problem is the seats are mitered, so part of it is usable, but part of it is not usable. So we're gonna study that this, this year, and we'll look at what the groups, but there is a, a good portion of it that isn't, so some of the aluminum particular cuts that are all at those miters cannot be reused. The undercarriage, however, some of that can be reused, and we have 10 rolls there, so to match what we have existing would be 15. Sturdy Steel is the company we've used there, and so to try to match up, what we've asked them to do is come up with a conceptual of doing that. Now, one of the factors is, is that it's not necessarily cheaper to try to tear that down, relocate it versus building it over, so we're gonna look at all those factors.
And actually maybe lose something that's useful in the process. All right, and then the second thing, June 27th, we have a, and I know that Ted, you're, you're saying there's gonna be a lot more public meetings, but my understanding, this is getting close, and I'm just wondering if we, have we sent a letter yet to them about this issue, the high, the high tension wires going through Corona?
2017?
Uh, yeah, we did.
In opposition or?
Previously, but one of the things we did also when we sent out the letter to the CPUC, Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, regarding our opposition to the Riverside Transmission Reliability Project, I think previously we had included the Circle City Project. This time around, we didn't mention it.
Correct.
In terms of our continuing to oppose this project, the Circle City Project. So if, if that is the city council's position that will continue to at least comment on that, we would need to send a separate letter of opposition or suggestion in terms of, for example, undergrounding the, the lines.
Do we need to agendize that, or can we just continue the message now, if that's, if council agrees?
Uh, yeah, if, if the city council just wants to direct staff to prepare a letter for the mayor's signature, that is something we can.
I, I would like that, and I would for undergrounding, and if we could get that letter out, if we're all aboard on that.
Do we have, is ready up?
Do we need a motion, or how do we do this?
We don't need a vote on that, because it's not on agenda.
Okay.
It's just a direction to staff, and we.
Okay, so I'd love a letter, yes.
Unless somebody opposes, I will sign a letter, initially you correct, and Mayor Newton at the time signed a letter to Corona and Riverside at that time opposing it.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Greg? Wow. Colin?
No.
Awesome. Cheryl?
The next Norco Community Town Hall meeting will be Tuesday, July 10th, at Nellie Weaver Hall at 6:30, and residents will hear updates, legislative updates, city council updates, and information from the sheriff's homeless outreach team, and a potential Norco revenue measure, so I encourage residents to attend that meeting on July 10th.
Thank you. Matt? Good job. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple update items, council should have received their water quality report, you probably got it in the mail maybe a week or two ago, but that is now out, and, and as usual, our water quality is good, so, but that's out to residents. And regarding the agenda items tonight, appreciate all your support on everything we had on there, sorry for all the material you had to read through, but I do appreciate it. One of those items is, that you approved tonight, was the tree trimming grid program that we're gonna start. We are gonna, you know, post the information, the map showing the residents, the grids and the years that they're going to be done, so again, we're gonna try to get it out there and reckon, and, and let residents know that we do have a program, that there is, there will be a schedule, and it'll be available so they can understand kind of when we're gonna be in their community. Again, this is the first step, so we'll get that information out to the residents. We do, as far as active projects right now, we're about halfway done with our streets pavement project, the contractor's doing really well, getting through, I've heard Gerd reports, so far as the contractor being very aware, aware of when horses around, stopping all equipment, again, we're glad to hear that, that they, they pay attention and do that, they're doing a real good job in getting that done, so hopefully it'll be done in, in less than two weeks, and getting seven new, seven streets newly paved. And then we have a slurry seal project that we'll have out to bid, probably within the next 30 days, which will do slurry seal in all the LMD areas, and keep those roads in good condition, they're already in decent condition, and we want to continue that by getting a slurry seal that extends their life, so that'll be another, several, I mean, dozens and dozens of streets that'll get redone, so that'll be a good, good for the residents to see. We did have two bids come in this week, that came in under budget, which is good, for two new water lines, one on Temescal and one on Vine, which is good, so we're looking forward to get those projects forward and get those out there, and we'll certainly come back to you with more CIP projects in July and August to have you approve, so again, we're trying to start most of these projects out and, and getting them moving, so we're making every effort to spend the money you've given me and, and get things improved as quick as we can, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Stephen? Brian?
Just a note for everybody, and not everybody's here anymore, but the 23rd is the J C S D East Vale picnic in the park, approximately at nine o'clock, there will be fireworks show, these are gonna be large shells, five inch or greater, and so you're gonna see quite an aerial display and concussions, so we put out warnings and notices to everyone with their animals, that you should probably make sure you take good care of them, or put them inside during that time, so that's just a forewarning, and it probably the biggest effect on anyone is along the north bluffs of Norco right there, overlook that at that park.
Well, Jeff, what do you think?
Good stuff.
Yeah, already pages dues, yeah. Scott?
Just want to give council and community a brief update on the fire that started last Tuesday in the Prado Basin, the Euclid Fire. I had the absolute privilege of being the first day incident commander of that incident. The fire currently is 154 acres and 98% containment. We've had cow fire boots on the ground there every day since it started last Tuesday, and the troops are still out there. As many of you are aware from riding that area, it's, it's very complex and difficult, extremely heavy fuels, it's, it's nothing like the Santa Ana River, it's, it's a place of its own, so we'll be out there for a couple more days, ensuring that every hot spot is extinguished and it's no threat to our communities.
Thank you, Scott, with 100 degree temps, I know you guys are working hard out there right now. Eric, I should have hit you up earlier to talk about the 4th of July enforcement when people were here, but you got a, hopefully a video audience for you.
Yes, so like the last several years, we've planned our fireworks enforcement, we will have deputies out along with code enforcement, animal control, offering their assistance, we partner with fire as we do every year to help us with signage, we've released information on social media, so again, the warning to anyone that chooses to violate the law, that they're facing $1,000 fines for the safe and same fireworks, and $2,000 fines for anything that shoots off into the sky like a mortar, and there will be repercussions if anything goes beyond that in terms of explosive devices, which obviously would result in being arrested and placed in jail.
Thank you. And then with all the new resurfacing and pavement upgrades, I know you guys are gonna be busy, because people like to drive faster when the roads are fixed, so. With that, and nothing further?
I'd like to go back to Chad.
Oh, same, I'm sorry.
To have him provide some information regarding the grading project related to the shade development on Fifth Street and Horseless Carriage, in that way that city council is aware of that.
Sorry, that's an item I forgot about, the shade development at Horseless Carriage and Fifth, they're going to, they're currently doing grading, they're going to start beginning to doing blasting on the property as part of their grading project, their first blast will be scheduled, it's supposed to be a single one, which is this Friday at noon. That information has been provided to our Kelly Newton to provide, and the city clerk to provide information on our various media platforms, and that information should go out tomorrow. And they will be doing, they're scheduling, working on their schedule, they plan to do probably two blasts a week for about a month, on a Tuesday, I think they're looking at Tuesdays and Thursdays to do that work, but we're, we're still waiting to get their, their final schedule, but they are planning to do at least one blast, and only one blast, this Friday at noon.
Chad, in, in that, do we notify the Navy when we do that?
Yes, all the, all the entities within 1,500 yards, or yards have been, or 1,500 feet have been identified, including the Navy specifically, because of their.
Only because they have some sensitive equipment, okay. Thank you, and that's cap rock now?
Yes.
That's all special permit stuff, right?
Yes, all permits from the county and from the city have been, been prepared and filed.
And additional fees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Andy, anything further?
No, that's it, thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work. All right, with that, if nobody's got anything, we adjourn.